See where his, you know, practice was and go down to where the theater was that had the marquee for like, you know, the movies that were out at that particular time and stuff. So.
From Scott?
I never heard from Scott. I never heard from Dave either.
Dave's coming in.
Good. At least got a form.
Yeah.
A gift.
From Jackie.
And I just noticed that my description didn't carry over for the US Bank, but that is booster club, start cash for tomorrow's golf tournament and registration money that was needed. Not sure whether that did.
I'm.
I'm on there.
I either found me it or deleted or?
Actually.
Roll it.
Discover it.
Yep, relax, discover it.
Seven o'clock, I'll call the meeting order if you could join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Wells, you have the roll?
I do.
Two, adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes or additions other than the additional list of bills?
Um, just one in my report section. I gave each one of you an update on some potential revisions to the mission statement that we talked about that were provided by board members and then first draft of the language for the parent and community engagement goal. So that's my only addition. I'll talk about that first before I jump into the return to learn.
Sure. I obtain a motion to approve.
May I most approve the agenda of those changes as listed?
Second?
Motion second to adopt the agenda with the changes as listed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Security. Minutes of past meetings, financial reports, summary list of bills plus additional.
Uh, the first page after the minutes, uh, page four, as you can see, is the up to date of year end June 2021. That's through the bills as of 7/31/21. So it will look different than the report that was in last month and I'll continue to update until we've certified with the state. Um, the revenues did not include title dollars or our final ESSER request, so that will be different. And expenditures are fairly up to date, I believe, other than what was in your backboard packet tonight for non-public reimbursement and that it simply flowed through. So that, I like I said, shouldn't change a whole lot with audit coming up. Until then, there might be a few minor changes. Otherwise, I will update with that and reconcile to bank statements next month.
Want to comment on the minutes in the third paragraph? One, after June 14th, 2002.
Jackie, remind me those number of payments to non-public schools for mileage, I think it is.
Yes, so it's flow-through dollars. So at the end of the year, throughout the year, the non-publics that we have students attending from our district have to file a report with me for any student that lives more than four miles from their school, which we don't have any non-publics in Rock Rapids. So all of them live four miles from their school. And we do not provide transportation. They provide all their own transportation. So then we provide what's called parent reimbursement or reimbursement to that district. So I file a report with the state. The state pays us money for it. I pay the districts for their costs to transport their students.
So we do get reimbursement?
Yeah, it is complete flow-through entry. Yeah, no dollars out of our pocket.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And the reason that that's required is some districts do bus for those schools. So there's a different level of reimbursement that you can request. Otherwise, they should just reimburse them directly, but.
If you get with the public, if we had a non-public school inside our, in Rock Rapids, for example.
Right, so.
Then it might make sense for us to pick up them and drop them at that.
Correct.
Sure.
Correct. So I know West Lion has one route they do because they have Inwood Christian. Yeah, otherwise, yeah, for us, it just doesn't make any sense.
Yeah.
But we still have to report them and pay the flow-through dollars.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments on those items? If not, I'll entertain a motion when you're ready.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda terms, including the additional list of bills.
Second?
Motion second to approve the minutes of past meetings plus the financial reports, summary list of bills plus additional. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Security. Item four, recognition, congratulations to staff, students, and community. Mr. Jordan?
Yep, so I got a copy of that on your tables. First, we'd like to congratulate the baseball team on their nine and 13 record on the season. Seven and nine, I believe that was fifth overall in the SULAN conference. And bowed out in the postseason, seven, six to Unity Christian. And of note, Unity Christian won our region of the state and represented kind of Northwest Iron in the state tournament. So congratulations to the team, Coach Docker. And then individual awards that have come in, Academic All-State, Luke Rasmussen, first team, and Jacob Pletzky, second team. So we want to recognize those two young men. And then all-conference, you can see Zach Lutmer, Reese Vander Zee were first-team selections. And then Luke Rasmussen was second team and Cooper Spees, honorable mention. And then Reese did also receive all-district recognition as a pitcher, second team. So, um, baseball season seems like it ended a long time ago, but we're going to make sure that those students are recognized. Uh, in addition, um, we want to wish the all-state band and choir auditioners the best of luck. They've spent time at the Warburg Meister Singer All-State Camp over the course of the last week in preparation for auditions later this fall. But much like a lot of our students, they've been very active over the summer. It's not just something to pick up once classes get started. So you can see, uh, we've got three auditioners when it comes to band, Ellyora Enriquez, Lyse Gians, and Gabby Rasmussen. And then in choir, Lilian Downard, Matthew Langholt, Olivia Lyman, Maggie Sides, Chase Steedens, Anna Van Artson, and Anna Horties. So not all of those folks were able to make it to Meister Singer, but some were. And we want to wish them the best of luck as they continue to prepare for auditions later this fall. So, uh, staff recognition, tomorrow's will be the final day of the summer, the second edition of our summer school program. So we want to thank, um, the staff members, especially Brookston, Halma, Melissa Lackey, Cheryl Mans, Tana Meyer, Diane Rec, and Jody Shirk. Forty-three students participated here in the last two weeks, K through six. So again, the focus was reading, math, and some STEM activities. Again, that's a new for us. That was an addition that we added. If you remember, kids were here the whole month of June. But again, with some ESSER dollars, we felt like an additional two weeks of summer school was a good thing to add. So, Mr. Harmon, you got anything you want to kind of chime in about the summer school?
Um, let me just send this down.
Yep.
I just have a summary for you. It kind of talks about, you know, again, the efforts of the staff are just amazing. And so I thank them. We thank them for that, put in their time and effort and having fun and motivating these kids yet. But it talks about, uh, Mr. Cruz also ran on the CLL Summer School in June. Talks about they had eighteen kids attend that. Uh, he ran that every day for the four weeks of June, mentioned this before, uh, Fourth of July, and what they did, a summary there. Um, our summer reading program down below talks about how many kids we have per week, some staggering numbers there, like the first day we had fifty-seven kids show up, which was a great sign. And that was a Thursday right before, um, Memorial Day. And then, of course, our gear-for-school is what we called it, uh, forty-three kids during those two weeks. So, you know, it was great to see the parents commit to it, the kids hopefully enjoyed it, um, and that we see effects of it at the school year from it. So I just wanted to give that as a report to the board so that you kind of, if anyone asks, they could report on what we did this summer for our kids. All right?
Steve, just a question here in the summer reading program.
Yep.
As you've got the week list, it's so for first through fourth graders, six, fourteen to six, seventeen, you have one hundred and forty-four kids.
Yep.
Is that divided by four?
Yes.
Per average? So that's one hundred and forty-four.
Divided by four.
Divided, okay.
And then that's just your first, your fourth graders. And we have fifth and sixth graders. That was a new, we had to demolog and have a different session or a different spot for them. So you, to get a total for the week, you have those two up. So.
Okay.
Okay. So we average about fifteen to twenty kids per grade, which is amazing.
So like the summer reading program, that's, it's kind of open to everybody.
Open everyone.
And then the gear-up for school is kind of those identified.
Yep, targeted. Yep, just to help them maybe get them to start their school. No, good question. All right. Other questions?
Thanks, Mr. Harmon. Uh, last one I have down there, Dave Ackerman made a donation of $2,000 to the industrial tech program for purchase of tools or other equipment necessary for future education-based construction projects. So I want to thank Mr. Ackerman for that contribution. You know, Mr. Engle's already got plans for that. So it doesn't take long. Anything else, Mr. Engelman or Mr. Harmon?
No.
Okay. Item five, communications. Any public input tonight? Doesn't look like it. Any course, additional correspondence?
Nope.
Okay, move on to reports. Uh, Steve, I'm assuming that was your report?
Yep.
Jason, you're good?
Yep.
Okay. Mrs. Wells?
The school board election, um, is coming here in November and nomination papers are available in my office from now until the filing deadline of September 16th. First date of file is August 23rd. Need thirty-two signatures and affidavit of candidacy. And all of the information are in the packets in my office for anyone who wishes to obtain one.
Okay, thank you.
And number two, fiscal '21. So 2021 audit is underway. I've been doing that virtually for most of it. And then she will be onsite next Tuesday and Wednesday. Um, we'll have what's called a, um, single audit. So because we took in more than $750,000 in federal funding because of ESSER and CARES dollars, we will have what's called a single audit. So there'll be additional paperwork that will be required on her end and on my end. And unfortunately, it's just, it'll have cost as well. But because we received all of those CARES dollars, bumps us to that next level between hot lunch, which we didn't even really have to apply for, just almost every school got that, and then all of the one, two, and three ESSER dollars. So pushed us over the edge by about $100,000. So. Are they more than, just to kind of update you, that'll be a little bit more of a in-depth audit and additional paperwork.
Is that a significant amount of work?
I don't know. We'll have, probably have. Yeah, and I was going to say, I don't know so much on my end, other than we have to go through every grant.
Okay.
Uh, line by line, and then, um, some more journal entries and type things. But I think on her end, it's a lot more. It's just, you know, more pages to the audit that not a lot of people read, but is required.
It's all part of the accountability component?
Correct. Make sure that the money that we did take in was for suitable expenses.
Sure.
That's all I have.
Any questions for Jackie? Okay, uh, board members, I have a few things. Dave, Gary, anything to report on? Okay. Uh, three things I have is, so as the liaison to the school foundation, uh, their investment account has done very well and they've essentially met their goal. So starting next year, they are bumping their scholarship budget from $2,500 to $10,000. So the, yeah, pretty significant jump there. The, um, the amount of scholarships and the quantities have yet to be determined, but their bucket's going to be $10,000 for that. So congratulations to them and thanks to them for that.
For scholarships that have come from the foundation, I want to say they've been like $250 each?
They've been five, 500.
Five, 500.
Yep. That was in the budget anyways that I was presenting. Yep. Uh, second item I have on my list is I've asked Mr. Jorth to, um, make some preliminary looks into a possible transition to like an electronic board, um, agenda, minutes, kind of clearinghouse for some of our documents set up. Uh, some of our surrounding districts do that. I know, I think West Lion does it, and so does Sibley O'Chetan. But, uh, it's not something that's going to happen right away, but just have him start putting some feelers out for that. Maybe visit with some vendors at the ISP conference in November.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the last item I had on my list is, uh, since I became president back in November, I've kind of been watching some agenda formats for surrounding districts and other schools, looking at some things. And next month, I'd like to start to make some changes to the format of the agenda. And there's, aren't really going to be any more items on there other than potentially, uh, listing all of our standing committees and giving them an opportunity to report at every board meeting. Even if there's nothing to report, at least we have an opportunity to do that in the meeting. Um, hope to roll that out next month and I'll seek input from Brent and, um, Dave and others on that as we do that. Won't be anything earth-shattering, but just so there are no surprises next month. And that is all I had on my list. Mr. Jorth?
Uh, like I said, I apologize for not getting into the agenda, but wanted to follow up in regards to the recommendations or potential revisions to the mission that we discussed during our work session. And so I included kind of my first draft there for a revision and then some options that both Dave and Andy provided. With Scott and Joel gone tonight, we'll make sure that they get a copy of that. And then, um, whether it's next month or October, ultimately, if we're going to make any changes, I'd like to try to get that adopted over the course of the next couple of months. I also, in my research, tried to give you some other language that members of the SULAN conference utilize for their, um, mission and vision statements and just kind of their, um, belief statements if they've got them on their website. So you have that on the front side. On the back then, similarly, number four there, my first draft on the update to the empowering families in the community. We talked last time, if you remember, our three big ideas were partnering and education of their children, collaborating with the community to expand the opportunities for students, and then regular, meaningful communication to ensure each student's needs are met. So my draft is at the top, some revisions down there at the bottom. If there's continued to be discussion, um, I'd like to do that with all five of us around the table so that ultimately we can each have a voice at the table. So wanted to make sure everybody had those. If you've got continued, uh, suggestions or recommendations, be happy to, um, include them before next month's meeting. Um, secondly, return to learn, um, items in the packet, I did provide you what the Department of Public Health, uh, sent out towards the end of last week in regards to, uh, just kind of updates and reminders as we start the school year. Um, you know, I, as I've summarized our return to learn guidance, I kind of got seven things I want to just update everybody on. Number one, attendance. Like we said throughout the course of the year last year, if you don't feel well, err on the side of caution and stay home. You know, that's going to continue to be the message, uh, for students and families. Uh, but if you recall, in May of last year, the Department of Public Health and, um, Department of Education provided guidance that said, uh, we should be treating COVID-19 like any other illness. So individuals that should test positive, students or staff members should stay home, you know, for the ten days of isolation from whenever their symptoms began. But, um, schools are no longer required or mandated to do the contact tracing. So if you are in a classroom with somebody that's tested positive, we'll inform the families and they can make those decisions on their own. But it won't be us, um, essentially quarantining individuals, students, or staff members if they've been in close contact. Second thing, social distancing. Uh, we're going to return to more of a normal learning environment, but still use the common sense when it comes to social distancing. If we can maintain social distancing because it's more of a teacher-directed lesson, let's try to maintain our social distancing. Uh, are we going to guarantee six feet in every classroom between every student and their peers? No. Um, so we want teachers to let the learning objective drive the social distancing in the classroom. Uh, if they've got a cooperative learning experience, they're going to be probably at tables or in groups. Um, but if teacher's at the front of the classroom lecturing, let's try to increase the social distance and keep kids away from one another when we can. Uh, thirdly, uh, face masks. Again, at the, in the spring, if you recall, um, not only did we take action that we going to return to more of an optional face mask requirement, but, um, the governor's updated proclamation stated that we cannot mandate staff members or students to wear a face mask. Um, in saying that, um, we also don't want to discourage anybody from wearing a face mask. So especially for those staff members or students that have not been vaccinated, we want to strongly encourage that they do wear a face mask. Um, just know that we can't require it or mandate it. Uh, hand washing, hand sanitizer. Again, just like we have in here, we got hand sanitizer when you enter, uh, the boardroom. Our classrooms continue to have that hand sanitizer. We'll encourage kids to cover their coughs and sneezes and wash their hands, uh, when, uh, appropriate. But hand sanitizer will kind of be our primary, process, just like we had last year. Water bottles will continue to be allowed. You know, students are encouraged to bring a water bottle from home and can fill it up throughout the course of the day to try to limit, um, water fountain, you know, any transmission that might happen at those areas. Uh, the sixth one, school transportation. School routes will return to kind of the pre-COVID, uh, routines. So we won't be shuttling kids to school, dropping them off, and then going back and picking up the in-town kids. So we're just going to kind of return to a pre-COVID situation, especially with our bus routes. It'll be a part of a, a regular route, either the last stop on their way in in the mornings or the first stop on the way out in the afternoons. Um, and then we've talked a lot about breakfast and lunch. Uh, breakfast and lunch will be free for all students, first time through the line. The only time you'll need to make sure that you have money for a bunch of times that kids are getting an extra milk or a second time through the lunch line. Uh, but that, you know, those federal dollars continue to, uh, be available and will be available throughout the entire school year. Anything that I'm missing, principals that we've talked about over the course of the last couple of weeks when it comes to return to learn or any questions from anybody about return to learn?
Got a couple for you.
Yep.
I'm assuming we are still going to try and update our COVID count, if you will, every morning?
Yep.
Okay. And number two, can you talk a little bit about the masking in the public transportation slash bus?
Yep.
Issue that we've talked about?
Yeah, so in the, the document I provided to you, CDC, um, had a stipulation that all public transportation, anybody on public transportation needs to wear a mask. Uh, you know, that's, reached out to the school attorney, talked to the other superintendents in the conference, and they've got different school attorneys. But we feel that the governor's proclamation kind of overrules those CDC guidelines and expectations for public transportation. So students and staff members will not be required to wear a mask on the bus. Um, and we won't be enforcing that when kids get on. Again, strongly encourage those that want to wear them to wear them, but we're not. Again, strongly encourage those that want to wear them to wear them, but we're not going to refuse to transport a student that doesn't. Also in the packet on page 20, the board had asked for kind of an update on how we're planning to use about the $600,000 in S R three funds. And so you can see I've kind of broken it into two categories, salaries and then our curriculum purchases. If you recall, we have to use 20% of those dollars to address learning loss. And so we're going to be well over that 20% if you're looking just specifically at curriculum. So we just purchased in the spring a new science curriculum, so about $60,000 of those S R three funds utilized to purchase that curriculum. The math team will start their two-year cycle of reviewing math curriculum, but we're planning to purchase that in the spring of 2023. But then we've also earmarked another $70,000 for any classroom interventions or curriculum or teachers feel like would be appropriate to utilize in their classrooms over the next two years. The salaries, both the counselors' salaries the next two years, like we used the S R two funds this last year. That's how we're planning to use that. But also, as we look at our class sizes, that class of 2032, that will be this year's third grade classroom. Excuse me, the second grade classroom, where we've got 47 students, but we've maintained three sections. So one staff member's salary each of the next two years. Again, similar to what we, how we use those funds for S R two. And then we've earmarked $10,000 for the summer school, and then any after-school programming that we want to add over the course of the next couple of years as well. So that's how we get to, you know, the 668, 209 for S R three funds.
That's what the salaries were essentially just covering, existing expenses.
Yep. Yep. And so an opportunity for us to try to save some general fund dollars. But at the same time, you know, still meets the criteria in the S R categories. Obviously, mental health with the counseling, and then the class size reduction for the teaching salaries. Okay. The next item I have, Zuland Conference update. We had mediation on Monday in Sioux City. I was hoping to have something to truly report, but unfortunately, we're waiting for the mediators to provide their recommendation. As, you know, we took action in April as a board not to expand the conference. That continued to be our primary argument, that Zuland Conference is very comfortable with 10 current members. And going above the 10-member composition disrupts the scheduling and the ability to really play a true round robin, home and home schedule, especially when we get to like baseball and softball, basketball and volleyball are the three sports that kind of would, we would have to get creative about how we're scheduling all those games. And then, like I said, I'm expecting to hear, hopefully by Monday, as soon as Monday, what the mediators' recommendations are. But however that should come out, either Western Christian or the Zuland Conference could appeal that decision to the Department of Education. So Director Lebo ultimately has the final say. And so there's already a date for that, which is August 30th. We'll just have to see if either side decides to appeal whatever the mediator's recommendation may be. So continue to wait on that, and I'll just continue to update the board as we go through the course of the next couple of weeks. Registration enrollment update, that's, I gave you the kind of a printout of our current enrollment. Last, I'm going to go back the last four years as well. But as it sits today, enrollment looks very positive and optimistic. So since count day last year, between October 1st and the very last day of school in May, we actually increased by 14 students, okay? And from the end of the school day, based upon the number of new students and families that registered, we've added an additional 19 students. So we could still have kids and families that have moved, and we just don't know it yet, and we're waiting on those records requests from other schools, but a pretty optimistic perspective. Granted, not all of these students that are represented on here are necessarily students that are going to be full-time students. There are some that are, you know, here for band or choir only, or maybe a CTE course or two. So even though it says we're up 33 right now, doesn't necessarily mean that our certified enrollment come October 1st will be that. So I'll continue to update everybody, but that is a positive kind of coming out of registration. You know, the anomaly there is the seventh grade of eight new students, and all male. So.
They were all male? 75% of them were male.
Yep. So that's, that's, it just so happens that that's where the bulk of, at least from the end of the school year to now, have kind of fallen. And then the last thing I have is just kind of back-to-school updates for everybody. Hopefully, everybody received the Lion Tracks edition yesterday. And we're really promoting Back to School Night on Monday, the 23rd, for families from 5:00 to 7:00. That's kindergarten through 12th grade. All the staff will be here. Kids and families can drop off anything that they want to before that first day. See their teacher, you know, just kind of make contact before the first day. Otherwise, we welcomed new staff members on Tuesday, five new staff members, and we're excited about what they're bringing to the table. We'll have staff development for all staff members next Thursday, and then teachers on Friday. So those are coming up. And football and volleyball and cross-country practices have started for the high school. And then when school starts, then we'll begin our middle school activities. So it's go time.
Yes, it is.
Is it really obvious? We're not talking about it.
Thank you, Mr. Jorth.
Yes.
Do you have anything under old business, so we'll move on to new business? Item A, consider 2022 ISB legislative priorities.
So I included in the packet last year's belief statements, and then as you kind of get into that, there's 32 resolutions from last year. And then I think it's page 39 of our packet. ISB, through the delegate assembly, identified their five priorities. Last year was preschool, mental health, school funding, state supplemental aid, and then COVID-19 remediation. I have my recommendations for this year going forward. What I feel like should be our recommendations for ISB and the priorities. I would reiterate, you know, the first three continue to be three that we supported last year. The first one being local governance and accountability and decision-making. Instead of, we, according to state law, have that authority, but as we saw throughout the course of COVID last year, it really felt like some of those decision-making powers and authorities were kind of stripped of us. So I think that's an important one. The fiscal responsibility and stewardship, the state supplemental aid, not only a rate that supports the learning environment, but the timing of the allocation of that. We've seen over the last few years that they don't, the legislature doesn't always meet its statutory requirements to set that within the first 30 days, and thereby it just creates more headaches for us as we begin that budgeting process. So that'd be my second recommendation. The third one is the teacher recruitment and licensure. Feel very fortunate that, you know, our teachers this year, we didn't have to get really creative. We were able to find suitable candidates pretty early during the process. But it's, it's kind of scary, once Jason and I went down to Des Moines last week, all the schools that continue to look and try to recruit teachers at this point in game, two weeks from the start of the school year. So the flexibility component of the licensure and the pathways for us to get good people into our classrooms that we're comfortable with, I think is important. And then the fourth one is the standards and accountability priority. As we implement new science curriculum, this priority points to, we don't want to be changing and altering our state standards and benchmarks every couple of the years. We would like that to be consistent, and we'd like for the assessments to be consistent so that we're not continuously trying to hit a moving target. So those are my four recommendations. I don't know if you guys had an opportunity to look through the packet or have any other recommendations, but I think those four are three, four good choices.
Any comments or questions?
The only thing I noticed is just that numbers don't quite match up. But I think the selection that makes sense to me.
Yeah, I think governance is 28, actually.
Yeah.
See what you're saying? Yep.
And the supplemental state aid, that was 20, and teacher recruitment is 16.
And the first, the first three we supported last year.
Correct.
And the fourth one, the mental health one.
Last year, the fourth one was mental health.
Yep.
Right. And so not trying to downgrade mental health by any means.
Sure. I'm okay with what Mr. Jorth has recommended, but certainly open that other suggestions.
I'll make motion to approve those four items as legislative priorities.
Motion and second to approve the priorities as recommended, all four of them. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item B, consider ballfield complex concrete bids.
So in, the ballfield advisory committee met in May and identified that we had to finish the concrete walkway behind the press box, the new softball press box, you know, and then a variety of ADA parking at the various entrances to both the ballfields and the new softball field area. And in speaking with Bruce Eckenrod and the advisory committee, kind of some improvements to the batting cage area, similar to what the softball field has. You've got concrete for different hitting stations at the softball field. Just making those same improvements at the Little League field and then at the baseball batting cage area. So that's the third item there. And then a new soccer storage shed going in, need a pad for that as well. So two contractors submitted bids, Mark Mulder and Mulder Concrete and Brad Hinton and Tuitt Construction for the totals that are listed there in the packet. It's my recommendation to approve the bid from Tuitt for $30,938.
Confident we can get the work done with, I don't want to say it, but let the snow flies?
Yeah. I mean, we have a September 18 deadline on that. And we wanted to, we wanted that so that, again, we can do some dirt work and get some seed planted.
By the way, then?
Yep.
Okay.
So tomorrow, that's priority number one, is whoever the board should approve tonight. We'll get ahold of them and get that started. The other caveat is, even though, you know, the total's 30 or $35,000, we split that 50/50 with the city. And so our cost would be half of what's listed there.
Does this have to be approved by the city as well?
We are, since we're the fiscal agent, we've been in conversations with them. They're sitting on that ballfield advisory, and we've been sharing the quotes and the estimates as we've been going. So they, they're in agreement with.
Board?
Yep.
I just want to make sure we didn't have to wait for the city council to get the ballfield over. There's not any more discussion than that. I'll obtain a motion when you're ready.
I'll make a motion to approve the ballfield complex concrete bid to, to Tuitt.
Motion and second to approve the concrete bid from Tuitt for a total of $30,938 and 25 cents. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, consider shared transportation director contract with George Little Rock for 2021, 2022 school year.
So, you know, since Jeremy Sprouse resigned in June, we've been advertising and recruiting a new transportation director, and we have been able to identify an individual for that. And so kind of in conjunction with our personnel hiring of lame menning, we want to update the contract with George Little Rock for the sharing of that position. Like we had planned, it will be 80% of the time at Central Lion, 20% of the time at George Little Rock. And so, you know, the sharing incentives for both districts are approximately $30,000 in operational sharing dollars. But as you can see on page 54 of the packet, or page nine or exhibit B of the contract, what the breakdown of the salary and benefits would be, $65,000 costs for Central Lion, and then we will bill George Little Rock for about. costs for Central Lion, and then we will bill George Little Rock for about $16,000 of of that position.
Is GLR waiting for us to hire him before they act?
Yep. So they've got a board meeting Monday.
Monday. Okay.
Do we both get equal sharing dollars? Is that right?
Yep. It's not a, it's not weighted based upon the contract.
Did you say that was 30,000 sharing dollars?
Yeah. So that was one of the legislative updates. All of our sharing positions going forward will be reduced by one student per position. So a year ago, it was five students, which was approximately $35,000. This year, there'll be more students, so it'll be closer to $30,000. And same thing with Amanda's position as well. It'll go from, I think, three to two for HR director. So, but they've added additional positions, so like special director, school psychologist.
So it's not per district, because they can split.
Per district.
Per district.
Will it keep reducing or does this?
The, the law is just that one student per position right now. Not to say that they won't begin to phase out those, something that will continue to follow and advocate for maintaining the the current sharing incentives. Otherwise, we're going to have to relook at those positions and whether it's in our best interest to continue them.
If I remember right, the justification for reducing the number of dollars or the number of students by position was because they added more positions, right?
Exactly.
So it's not like they just across the board said, oh, we're not going to give you as much now. They added more positions to somewhat compensate for it and spread out the dollars, basically, if I understand.
You're exactly right.
Okay. There's no more questions on that. That one's obviously tied into hiring item two A. So take action on this first. Entertain a motion when you're ready.
Make motion to approve the shared transportation director contract with GLR for 21, 22.
Second.
Have a motion in second to approve the item as listed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item D, personnel. I think we'll take these all together since there's so few of them. Resignations and hydrants, flag, Mr. Dorr.
Yep. So Mr. Dockers resignation is included in the packet for head baseball coach. As you can see there, he's served our students in the program for the last six years. Ben has a family that's, his kids are getting of the age who are there more active. And so he wants to spend some more time with them. So that's included. Lane Many's position for the transportation director is also included. Rebecca Haekman, her due date is right around the first day of school. So Bart Foltz is put forward as a long-term sub for her whenever the baby should arrive. Could be first day, it could be within that first week. We'll just have to to see. And then Mr. Pletzky in the middle school robotics position.
Do you feel we'll be able to build head baseball coach?
Yes. I know a couple of people that are interested, so hopefully we can get that identified here in the next month or two. And so students and families can, and the coaches can begin their planning for next summer.
Thanks to Ben for those six years of service. That's, it's a busy summer in six years, for sure.
Yep.
Entertain a motion when you're ready.
Aye. I'll make a motion for the resignations and hiring as listed.
Second. A motion in second to approve the resignation and hiring as listed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Announcement states to remember.
What, as I look through these announcements here, the one back to school item that I didn't kind of identify was preschool open house. If you recall, preschool, they don't start until after Labor Day. And so they'll, their first day is on the 7th, but their open house will be the Thursday, September 2. So any preschool families, we would encourage them to get those two dates on their calendars. And then also, our next board meeting, if there's any conflicts with Monday, the 13th, I'll be sure to touch base with Joel and Scott. But you guys have any issues with the 13th?
Seventh grade volleyball, eighth grade volleyball, middle school JV varsity cross-country at West Lion, ninth in JV football at Sioux Center School Board Meeting. Seventh grade volleyball is home, eighth grade is at Sioux Center.
'Tis the fall season, right? And they got all covered there.
No more room in the square.
That's right.
It's full.
Our work session will be on kind of facility planning, buildings and grounds, kind of looking at all those future projects going forward.
Buildings and grounds going, is there anything for them to meet before that?
Yeah, so that we've got an opportunity to kind of revisit those and then they can speak to kind of the conversations that have been happening over the last few years. And then the entire board can kind of weigh in and we can take it where we want to.
Very good.
So did you say building and grounds going to try and meet before?
Yep. Yep.
Okay. Anything else? We're ready to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Three minutes different than last year.
Chris and Mary, there's a word.
Did you want the list of?
Who are Chris and Mary?
Recognition, do you got one?
I was so unhappy, by the way.
That was after a wrong one.
I'd have kicked all their butts.
Just.
So I need new audit terms of agreement signed because now we are over the 750. So unfortunately, you signed that last month, but this is an update. You can look at it if you want. It's all the same information, but there is the line there about additional work required because of the threshold of the 750,000. This is the sharing agreement. This is the Tuitt construction.